Hello, I'm Dan Murphy and this is a special town meeting preview. I'm here with Ford Spalding to talk about some of the articles for the upcoming town meeting. So why don't we start with having you introduce yourself and what we're here for?
Dan, thank you for having me. I've been on the regional school committee up in Minuteman for seven years. I am representing the town of Dover on that committee. We have 16 committees, communities that are members of the district, ranging from Dover down south all the way up to Lancaster up north, to Arlington going towards the coast, and Stowe and Bolton going out west. So it's a wide geographical distance and it's also 16 very diverse, not very attached communities that all need to get along on these projects.
Okay, and for people not aware of what Minuteman is, we have a short film to show as an introduction.
Sure, before we get to that, why don't I just say, as I said, we're 16 communities. We operate under Massachusetts general law, Chapter 74, which is vocational schools, career and technical schools. Our students take both the academic courses, just as they do at Dover Sherburne. 100% of our students pass the MCAS exams. We have everything from Latin to French to Spanish to history to English to mathematics, all the same courses that we have here, but we are a second school. We are also a school that offers career and technical opportunities for our students in that we offer programs such as culinary arts, environmental science, cosmetology, automotive technology, robotics, engineering, biotechnology, horticultural, early childhood education, and landscaping. But before I continue on, why don't we take a look at that film?
Okay, well, here's the film.
My name is Ed Cotton and I'm the executive chef here at Soto 13 in New York City.
My name is Kathy Montreville and I am the head stylist at Salon Hair &amp; Beauty.
My name is Jason Crowell. I own and operate J.A. Crowell Corporation as a landscape construction business in Newton, Massachusetts.
My name is Erin Meister and I work for the cellular therapeutics and transplantation laboratory at Mass General Hospital. We give people a second chance at life. We work with the doctors and the nurse practitioners in assisting in stem cell transplants. So when patients come in with certain disease states that require transplant, we'll get the cell source and dose it in a way that fits the prescription of the doctor. It is life-changing what we do here and I just feel so grateful to be a part of that.
I never stop thinking about food. I'm always constantly buying books, reading books, going out for dinner. You're putting out the food as fast as you can and you look out into the dining room and you see a bunch of people enjoying themselves, smiles on their face. That's what really gets me going each day.
I basically do hair, makeup, and wardrobe, and I can also do facials, basic manicures, pedicures, and waxing. I love making people look and feel at their best. Usually when people come into the salon, you know, they don't really feel at their best until they feel like they look their part. I love making a difference in their personal self-esteem.
The best part of my job is seeing the finished product. When you actually build something, construct something with your hands, and you can see the before and the after, there's a great deal of satisfaction.
Minuteman prepared me in starting my own business with every aspect, down to customer service, people skills, financing, thinking of names and demographic. They gave us the confidence that we needed to be able to step into any job and to believe in ourselves enough to be able to know that we could handle it.
Minuteman helped me prepare to start my own business by exposing me to what horticulture and landscape is, whether it be turf management, landscape construction, greenhouse management, or even arboriculture where it's taking down and caring for trees. Minuteman enabled me to see all of those different areas and choose what I wanted to do when I graduated. In most high school settings, we'd never see that.
They have a bakery open to the public, a restaurant open to the public. You're in the back of the house, you're in the front of the house. It gave us a taste of what it was going to be like after we entered the real world.
All of the equipment they have, they really do have what mimics what you'd find in industry. I found even my freshman year of college, I was doing things that I had been exposed to in high school. I didn't realize at the time like how, you know, how unique that was as like a high school program.
At 14 years old, I had a big portfolio book and I was able to get any job right off the bat because, first of all, this kid has a whole book of her work, and second of all, she's not scared. Why? Because we had those mock trainings in our classroom and we had our teacher always prepping us and letting us know, you know, what will get you the job, what will make you stand apart. You have to be able to be a distinguished individual in this industry. There are many stylists born and many barbers born, but what makes you different? Our teachers made sure that we knew what that was and made sure that we capitalized on every chance to show the world what we could do.
I don't know if there's any other 15 or 16-year-old would walk up to an instructor and say, "Hey, I want to make consomme. How do you make consomme? Well, we set up a time this week and stay after and we'll make consomme." They cared, you know, they could see the fire in my eye and they knew that I wanted to learn more.
Going to Minuteman kind of encouraged me to be a little bit more proactive about what I want to do in my future. It kind of gave me a safety net in deciding what I wanted to do because I didn't know if I wanted to do biotech or environmental. So having that four years, I was able to kind of do both without spending $20,000, $30,000, $40,000, you know, declaring a major in college and then finding out one to two years into it that it wasn't for me.
I would say to somebody entering the program, don't limit yourself just to the vocation that you pick.
Give everything a chance.
You can never have too many mentors, you know? Ask questions, ask what they like, ask what they don't like. Finding something you don't like is equally as important as finding your passion.
Experience all the different shops and opportunities at Minuteman because later on in life, you're going to be glad you did.
So now, should we launch into a discussion of what's being discussed at the upcoming town meeting?
Why don't we? Go ahead.
Okay, so for the upcoming town meeting, there are three articles slated for the docket. One is to ratify the new proposed agreement. The second is whether or not Dover wants to withdraw from the Minuteman system. And the third, which only goes to effect pending the results of the second, is whether what process should take place to look for a new vocational school should Dover choose to withdraw. I think that's more or less the gist of the articles. As you pointed out before we watched the video, Dover is obligated to offer a vocational option to high school students, and right now it is Minuteman, so.
That's exactly right. Why don't we look at Article 1? Article 1 really deals with the regional agreement. We have been, the school was founded in about 1971. Dover joined the district in 1973, and that's when we originally had the 16 towns. At that time, a regional agreement was put together to meet the needs of the school and it's their governing, it's their document that we're governed by. That needed to change, and it needed to change really because we, for the last six years, have been working with the Mass School Building Authority to build a new building. Our school, current school building, is outdated, it's in, needs a lot of repair, and the projected cost of that is going to be $144.9 million, which we're going to be discussing at the spring town meeting. But soon as we started introducing high capital costs, smaller and larger towns said the existing agreement isn't going to work. So six years ago, we formed our first committee to take a look at the regional agreement. They came up with recommendations that didn't work out. We then formed another committee made up of the regional district and they put together their recommendations. That didn't work out. Actually, 10 communities voted on it. Dover did not vote on the article. One community turned it down at that time, Wayland, but we were an impasse because we need, unfortunately, due to our regional agreement, we need 100% of the 16 town meetings to approve a change in the regional agreement. Otherwise, it doesn't happen.
Right, and that's why this is a special town meeting, because this needs to take place before March 1st.
Correct. So we got together, the selectmen, we had got together 16 selectmen representing each of the towns and said, "Your turn. You do it. And you need to do it by January 1 because then we're going to have to take it to a special town meeting." And they are the ones that really wanted us to do special town meeting to, let's vote on the agreement, find out who's in or out of the district, and then we'll vote on the building later on. So that's what's happened. The selectmen brought it to us, the school committee voted to move it to a special town meeting. The first one is January 25 in Arlington, and the last one will be about, oh, the third, fourth week of February, when all the districts, towns will do it. Ours in Dover is February 8th. Now, that agreement has made some, I think, fairly significant changes that are going to benefit Dover. And the first and foremost is it's going to, currently, our capital apportionment means the minimum of five students. So anytime we figure out how much you're going to pay on capital, it's a minimum of five. Dover traditionally sends two to three students to Minuteman over the 10, last 10 years. That's pretty much what it's done.
So it's two to three over the past 10 years, is that what we've sent?
On the average, exactly. So if it was five, we'd be paying for students that we don't send. That part of the agreement has been changed to a minimum of one. So we're going to really only be paying if we send one student for one student, two students for two students. That's going to lower Dover's capital cost. And there is also proportional voting. Proportional voting based on the number of students that you have at Minuteman. Arlington, for example, has 165 students. Dover has two. They're going to have a greater say. I don't really like that. I've never really liked that, but fact is, in my seven years, under proportional voting, not one vote would have changed.
Right, and this is also reasonable compromise to try to get this agreement through.
Everything is by compromise, as you know. You know, that's sort of the way it works in the world down Washington or up in Beacon Hill, or even at Minuteman.
Yeah, and I think that, Ed, it's reasonable for us to make some sacrifices to be able to pay less.
Well, that's how, that's how we got the reduction from five to one for capital.
Yeah.
On the operating side, instead of each year having us calculate how many students we have, we're going to average it over a four-year period. That's going to allow our warrant committee and other committees to really level the costs. So I think that's going to be a good factor. It's making it easier to leave the district, you know? Some community, and that's important for communities that may want to leave. Currently, that would require a change in the regional agreement, an amendment to the regional agreement, and we need 100% of the communities to vote. Let's say if Dover wanted to leave, every community would have to agree with that.
Right, so this need, so if Dover, for example, wants to leave, we still need to agree to this agreement to make that happen?
Absolutely, because that's no longer going to be the case.
Yeah.
And now you're not going to have to have that type of an agreement. At the same time, by allowing communities to leave, it's going to make communities who might be interested in coming to Minuteman join the district because they know if they didn't like the way it was working, that might happen. And in fact, I will tell you that there are some communities right now that are talking to Dover, excuse me, talking to Minuteman because if we have a new regional agreement, if we have a new building, they may want to be a part of the district.
So that benefits Minuteman pretty well.
So it's going to behoove the voters to seriously consider voting for Article 1, mainly because it's going to give Dover options. We really won't get to Article 2 if we don't say yes to Article 1, and all the communities are going to have to agree to go to Article, to approve Article 1.
Okay, and then, so I guess, do you feel like we should move on to Article 2 then?
If you think that pretty much covers that article.
Well, I'm just wondering if there's anything more that you wanted to add?
No, I think that's, that's pretty good.
Okay.
I think it's pretty simple. If you want the options, if Dover wants an option to consider leaving, you're going to have to vote for Article 1. Article 1, I mean, excuse me, yeah, Article 1 at a town meeting, and that also has some other things in there that's going to be of benefit to Dover, assuming Dover is going to stay.
Yeah, it's almost a one-win, so.
Exactly.
So then we move on to Article 2, which is the proposal to have Minuteman withdraw from, or have Dover withdraw from Minuteman.
Exactly.
So, as we noted, it does still need approval of the first article before that we, well, there are ways to leave, but it's much more difficult.
Correct.
So then, and what are some of the benefits to leaving? What are some of the downsides to leaving, if we want to get into that?
I think the downs, the benefits to leaving are probably costs. It's going to cost more for Dover to stay in if they maintain three to one student population. If they go to four or more, it's going to cost less to be a member of the district.
And what's the situation of the economy?
And you know, if you looked at the total cost, the total cost, if we have two students in, it's going to be around $50,000 per student to stay in the district. It's actually a little bit higher than that, and that includes capital and operating costs and in transportation, special ed costs. That totals about $100,000, $120,000.
For two students.
That's less than 1% of our total budget in the town.
Yeah, and that's, that's for two students and now with the new agreement, it scales, yeah.
And if we went to four, if you go to four students and you looked at the cost of Dover being an out-of-district student coming to Minuteman, the cost is a wash.
Right.
And that's important to know because the Commissioner of Education has said we can now charge out-of-district students to a capital fee if they're under an MSBA program. That capital fee is around $8,000 per student.
Right, I was looking at some of the numbers that you provided me before this interview, and I believe that we do get some sort of tuition discount by being, by remaining a member of the, of the school versus?
It's going to be less expensive to be a member of Minuteman if you send more than four students.
Okay, so that only applies to?
And that's under our current 16-member, or even 10-member population if some towns elected to go. If we bring in a couple of larger towns, towns that say send 60, 70 students, and some of our out-of-district towns already do that, if we did that, that's going to lower the cost for the town, beyond what I talked about.
And you said that by agreeing to this agreement, there is the potential that a lot of those larger towns might be attracted?
Not a lot, but probably a couple.
Okay.
Probably a couple. And they're basically both, in both cases that I'm thinking of, they're cities, so that would be a huge benefit.
That would be a large population.
Exactly. Another reason for staying in is the education program. Minuteman is known for a superior career and technical education program. You know, I talked to you earlier about some of the things that we're doing for education such as biotechnology, horticulture, environmental science, et cetera. We're going to be introducing two new courses. One course is advanced manufacturing. Advanced manufacturing is used today to make medical equipment, medical tools, that kind of thing. It is a, there are a lot of wonderful advanced manufacturing companies around this area that are looking to, that do employ people that like, would graduate from Minuteman. So that's going to be important. We are also going to offer a program where we're going to have a theater in the box. And that theater in the box is going to be able to be used as a television studio for movie productions, for also theater productions. But what we're teaching students to do is how to do sound, how to do lighting, how to work for a company like, you know, or organization like DCTV. So there are great educational opportunities to stay in the, in the school. Another prime reason for staying is you're already a member. We are going to be offering, and the state says that we must do that, seats are only available on a first-come, first-served basis for in-district communities. If you're an out-of-district community in any vocational school but Minuteman we're talking about here, you're going to have to stand in line, wait to see if all the slots are filled in in-district, and then there might be room for you. We cannot guarantee that Dover, if they left, would get back into Minuteman. Therefore, you also can't guarantee that there are spaces available at Tri-County or Blue Hill or another school in the area. And that's something that we need to be concerned about. Vocational education is growing, and we're hearing that from our governor, we're hearing it from the president, et cetera. So will there be space? Finally, the Department of Education says if the town meeting allows Dover to leave, that's one step. That starts the steps, actually. You then must get approval from the Commissioner of Education on your plan to offer Chapter 74 education to students. So the Dover School Committee would have to put together a plan, approved by the Commissioner, to afford equal opportunity for Dover students to go to a career and technical school.
Right, and has there been any, would, do you know of any effort that's been made to, to create a, one of the plans should Dover leave?
I don't know if any of the 16 communities or the seven communities that are even considering this have done that. I also know that the Commissioner of Education has never had to deal with this for vocational regional districts. They have had to do it from, for some regular districts out in the western part of the state, but they've never had to do it for this. So this is paving new ground. I think it leaves a lot of doubt. We just don't know going forward what those opportunities would be.
And then, but I, we can still provide those opportunities while not being a member of a vocational school? We're just going to be absorbed into that waitlist process or?
Yeah, but Dan, where are they going to go?
Exactly.
Where are they going? Dover Sherburne High School does not offer Chapter 74 program education. So you're going to have to look at a Tri-County where Sherburne goes, or you're going to have to look at Blue Hills or another opportunity if there is room.
And then, and then what, do you know what some of the attitudes, if Dover leaves, do you know anything about some of the attitudes of other vocational schools accepting new members or?
I haven't personally talked to them. The superintendent is in contact with a lot of the super, other superintendents, and for the most part, there are very few spaces available. And there are going to be other towns, you know, looking to go on into those opportunities. So I think it is, I guess I can say if Dover decides to get out, I think they have a major problem in front of them trying to find other opportunities.
Right now, you're saying that, do we have two or three students currently in the system?
Correct. We have actually four students in Dover that go to vocational schools. Two go to Minuteman and two go to Norfolk Agricultural School. And that is an opportunity for students, however, if you look at the curriculum that Norfolk Aggie is offering, it's purely agricultural farm-based programs. They don't offer the engineering courses and some of the other courses. They do a terrific job and it's a very, pretty reasonable cost because the tuition is quite low. It's about $1,900 per student, but we also pay about $113,000 a year in Norfolk County taxes. What do we get out of that? We get a courthouse, we get a registry of deeds, and we get a great agricultural, career and technical agricultural school.
Okay, and then what would happen to these students should the, with the changes in the agreement or should Dover withdraw?
If students are currently in the school.
Yeah.
They will be able to complete their education at Minuteman. They'll be able to complete their four years. If a freshman comes in, for example, this year, let's say next September, they would be able to complete because you're really not out of the district until the town meeting votes to leave the district, until the Commissioner of Education approves your plan, and then that would become effective July 1, the following year that the Commissioner says you can leave.
Okay, so there's still sort of a?
Exactly. There's a window.
Yeah, there's a window.
There's a window.
And, but the question is what happens to future students who may want to go?
A future student, and Dan, if you were a student at DS, which you were, I think, at one point, if you were a student DS and in the eighth grade you decided to, wanted to go to Minuteman because that fit your style of learning? Not every kid can go to Minuteman. Not every kid should stay at Dover Sherburne. It really depends on your style of learning. If you decide to go and you're in district, you're in. If you're out of district, there has to be space available, not only in the school, but in the career and technical program that you are interested in. If you're interested in culinary arts because you want to be a chef, you want to own your own restaurant, as we saw on the video, there might not be room because that program might be filled with in-district kids.
Right, and, and the, and the town would still be obligated to pay the cost should out-of-district kid get it, get in, and those costs are probably going to be greater if we leave.
That's right. The town has no choice. If a student wants to go, they're going to, they have to pay. And they have to pay not only the tuition, not only the transportation costs, but they also have to pay special ed costs if they, if they're there. And if, under an MSBA building program, they'd have to pay a capital fee too.
Right, so, oh, I think you had some numbers on how much, on the differences of costs as a member versus a non-member, and maybe we should get into those a little bit.
Yeah, if you give me, let's look at that. And I'm just going to look at one scenario that I have. Under your current FY '17 budget, which you're actually going to receive, the school committee and Minuteman's going to vote on it in a couple of days from, from today, Dover is going to receive a total assessment of $69,800. That's based on two students. That's a cost of $34,931 per student. FY '20, if we have a building project, then the cost, if we had four students there, it would be $41,657. If we only have two students there, it would be $59,327. That's made up of something called a minimum required contribution, which is, in the case of the first example, roughly $49,000. That's what the state sets for the cost. There's transportation costs, there's an operating assessment cost, there's the tuition that you would receive, you have to do, plus a capital assessment. So that would come to $166,000. You divide that by two students and that's how you get there. Again, if you did that same example and there were, that's for four students. If you did it for two, that number jumps from 166 down to 118, okay? The cost for a, to go to the school if you were out of district would be $43,000.
Okay.
So really, if you have four students there, it's the same cost.
It's the same cost as being out of district, so.
Yes.
So things to consider for, for the upcoming town meeting. I guess we'll also briefly discuss Article 3, which is just to sort of?
Article 3 is really going to charge the Dover School Committee with coming up with a plan, presenting that plan to the Department of Education, having that plan approved, and then you would move, you would be out of the district and you can move forward.
Okay, so this is everything that's, that's going to be happening at the, at the upcoming town meeting. In order for any of this to happen, we, the town of Dover needs to reach a quorum of 175 people, I believe.
We need 175 registered voters in the hall.
Yes.
And this town meeting is not going to be lengthy. If I was guessing, I would say we could probably complete it within an hour from the time the meeting starts. So it starts at 7 o'clock. We should be able to be done within an hour. So if you can give up an hour of your time, it's very, very important because if we don't have a quorum, technically, we didn't pass the regional agreement.
Yeah.
We need all communities to do that. There is a snow date, non-quorum date, which is later on in February, but let's get it done on February 8.
Yeah, no, I would encourage everyone in the town of Dover who is a registered voter to come on down because otherwise you might have some friends who are there calling you up, telling you to get there because they want to reach a quorum and, and get this, this settled. Because this is a relatively important thing to have, have dealt with. It's important to the education of students in our town, giving them options and just in... education of students in our town, giving them options, and just important to the operation of the town in general.
The other date I want you to know about is Monday, January 25 at 7:30 at the Dover Town Hall is going to be the open warrant hearing to discuss this. At that, there'll be additional information to what we discussed tonight. And that would be a good time for you to ask your questions. The Assistant Superintendent of Finance will be there for Minuteman. So Monday, January 25 at 7:30 is a date to come to the Dover Town Hall, to the great room there. But it's important. We need to have everybody, we need to have everybody consider coming to the town meeting and we need 175 voters. Please, just one hour. Come.
Yeah. So thank you so much.
You know, you could probably, Jim Repetti, our moderator, might get upset at me, but you could probably give your, bring your kids, be in the outside room, at least register to vote. And then if the time came to vote, you could go in and vote, but, you know?
Well, I mean, there are visitor passes that we offer to non-voters because I am not a resident of the town of Dover, or I am not registered to vote in the town of Dover. And I know I will be there covering this and encouraging people to come down and form a quorum. And I would encourage everyone in the town of Dover to be there, vote and get this settled so that we can move forward.
Great. Dan, thank you for this opportunity.
No, thank you.
I think a lot of people don't know about Minuteman. I think the film that was done, and that was done by our own Andrew Mudge, who went to Dover Sherbin. And it's a great film because it shows what's going on at Minuteman today, but it shows the end results. You could own your own landscaping firm. You could own your own hairdressing firm. You could own your own restaurant in New York, be a top chef.
Yeah.
These are great opportunities for people.
Yeah. No, thank you so much. And please come to the annual town meeting, or the special town meeting on February 8. Thank you.